Alright, so the indication please.
Mayor, we have with us this evening Max Michael from the Michaels from the First Presbyterian Church here in Charro to do the indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly One, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the town of Charro and its wonderful people, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a pledge allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen. Welcome everybody here this evening, thank you for coming, and just say I hope you have a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you. Counsel, we have in here a packet of minutes on the November fourteenth council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Here none, do I have a motion to accept a matter presented?
Some will.
The second. So if the favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries unanimous. But also do we have a copy of the November financial report? Are there any additions or questions to that report? Here none, do I have a motion to accept a matter presented?
Some will.
The second. Any further discussion? All those that favor a motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. We have in this time of, Bryn Handbruk, Camden, Bill is our auditor, and he's here to report on our annual audit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, we'd like to thank the town of Charro for having us as your auditors. State law requires that you have an audit done every year, but it has to be done at your cost and your selection of a qualified firm, and we're very proud that you have again chosen us and look forward to working with you again in the future. Best thing about tonight's report is there's not much to report, that's something good coming from your auditor. There are some communications that I'm required to go over with you. You should all have the gray bound reports that our office issued. I'm gonna be bouncing around a bit, but I'm gonna be referencing page numbers, so we can all follow along. On pages one through three, this is a long-winded way of saying that the town once again got a clean audit opinion. We feel like the numbers contained herein can be relied upon by creditors, tax payers, rate payers, and any other interested parties that wants to use it. This was not what I call a gotcha engagement, we didn't come in here with the intention of finding mistakes and making anything personal. We look at things from a materiality standpoint, meaning if it was in, if there was an error and it was within a certain very tight range, we didn't feel the need to make a correction. So again, we feel like these statements are, can be relied upon to make decisions, and the opinion is unqualified, also known as unmodified, also known as clean, alright? Told you I was gonna bounce around a little bit, and we are. I'm gonna take you to page... Taking to page fifty-eight. In an audit of a governmental unit, the second most important matter that is addressed is a secondary opinion that we give, and this secondary opinion is in two parts. One part is on our opinion of your internal controls over financial reporting, and the second part of that is our opinion on whether or not you've been in compliance with externally imposed rules that the town must abide by. On pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine, we talk about your report on internal controls of financial reporting. There is no internal control system that's perfect, because every internal control system is run by human beings. So every internal control system could be made stronger, it could be made tougher for something to get through. However, when we measured the system that you currently have against what it would take to improve that system, we took into account what the cost it would take, and would you realize a benefit greater than that cost? And we came to the determination, it's our opinion, that there is no need for a change in your internal control system right now, because the costs would outweigh whatever the potential benefits were, alright? And on page fifty-nine, while this isn't a gotcha engagement, we do have to check for certain transactions and timeliness, your payroll tax deposits where they calculated right, where they made on time, your amendments to the state treasurer's office for criminal municipal court tickets, withholdings for health insurance and retirement where they set to the appropriate place on time, where they calculated right, where they matched properly. And we went through all those tests and procedures, we didn't find any errors, alright? So, we weren't on the lookout trying to find them, but over the course of our work and trying to tie the totals and subtotals back to what should have been done, we didn't find any errors or mistakes, and we didn't find any instances where things were not done in time and fashion. Alright, let's talk about some numbers. We're gonna talk about, we're gonna take a look at how we did on our general fund and compare it to our budget that we passed last year on page nineteen. Alright, so on page nineteen, you can see where you budgeted revenue by source, and you budgeted expenditures pretty much by function or department, alright? So the top half of the page, top third of the page, excuse me if you will. We have a total budget of about seven point five million dollars that we budgeted to receive. We ended up doing a little bit better than that, mainly because we collected more property taxes than we originally budgeted, and we had some grant income that came in that we did not contemplate during the budget season last year. Now, how's those things happen? Well, with the property taxes, you never know when there's going to be new development, there's gonna be influx of residents, you never know what, how much more new equipment is gonna be registered inside the town limits, therefore property taxes can vary from year to year for any number or combination of those reasons. When it comes to grant income, which is on the miscellaneous income line, you really don't know what grant you're gonna get, because you apply for it in one year, and it might be, it might be the next year or even the following year after that before you actually get it. And so you don't record it when you, you don't record revenue when you apply for it, you record it when you actually get it. This is the town actually got about three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars more than it was planning on getting, alright? And so the next section of this page is where we look at our expenditures by department, and you can see line by line, we overspent by about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, the reason we did that was because over the course during the year, we saw we were taking in more revenue than we had budgeted, okay? So this isn't an illustration of, of a town or a management being irresponsible, this is an illustration of, oh, we got the money and we need to spend some of this, and this is needed in the police department, so since we got more money than we thought we were gonna get, we'll go ahead and make those purchases. And so overall, for the year, we ended up with an eight hundred thirty-one thousand dollar surplus in the general fund. And some folks might say, well, that's a profit. Well, you know, some years, there are years where you don't have profits, and when it comes to a seven and a half million dollar spending, seven and a half million dollar budget, you came, you came pretty close to, to, to matching what you took in versus what you spent, if you take away those outstanding items that were kind of good surprises, that you didn't know, that you didn't know were coming, alright? Questions on the general fund? Alright, so, if there is any negative takeaways here tonight, I'm gonna turn your, turn your attention to page twenty-one. I'm gonna draw this to council's attention, it's not very popular, we don't like to talk about it a whole lot, but this is the statement of revenues, expenses, and the changes in the deposition for your combined utilities fund, water and sewer service. You can see the top part of the page, we list out your revenues, and then you've got your operating expenses, and the town showed a seven hundred and six thousand dollar loss for the year. This is a result of the cost of the system, cost of operating the system going up, but rates not keeping up with it. This is a result of a lot of deferred maintenance being performed this past year, but rates didn't get, aren't keeping up with it, alright? So, what I recommended to the finance committee earlier today is what I recommend to this body, that is, you folks had a rate study done two, three, four years ago, I don't, I can't remember what year you're in it, it'd be advisable. First of all, it's a good little fun to have one of those updated every three to five years, and if you folks are in the three to five year space now, it would be appropriate to have these rates looked at again. Not just for, how are we doing now versus rates now, revenue versus expenses now, but incorporate future capital project plans, the funding and the debt service of those capital projects going forward, incorporate all of those elements into what a fair rate plan should be. Also, it's helpful to compare the rates that you charge your customers with similar and peer systems, like other small towns, especially in the area. Find out where you are. The Rural Water Association South Connet publishes annually a survey of rates, alright? If there's a hundred respondents to this survey, and you see the town of Charro is at the bottom tenth percentile, your rates probably aren't where they're supposed to be. If you're in the top three or four rate chargers, as far as, I mean, your rates are that high, you're probably charging more than you should, and something should be wrong. But that's just another barometer to gauge where the town is, as a tool, okay? Now, in previous presentations, we've talked about long-term debt of the town, we've talked about your other post-employment benefits, we've talked about the unfunded pension liability and the town share of that. I'll be happy to go over any of those things with the council that you want me to, I'll also give you the option to not have to listen to me talk about that if you don't want to, again.
We'll all go for that option.
So what is the pleasure of council? Well, Mr. Mayor, that summarizes and concludes my prepared report, and the only thing I don't, the only thing left would be questions. If you folks don't have any, that's gonna conclude it for me.
Thank you, Bill. I know that the finance committee is there with you on this audit, but there are any comments, questions, or...
No, only comment on, I think Bill and his firm's hard work in getting a timely audit this year, and supported to get it in December, and thank you for getting to it sometime. And I'd like to compliment, seeing the mayor, the time, and Rob from putting together this budget. He's always conservative with the income side, and fortunately, most of our surprises are good ones, and I tend to thank you for what you do.
Anybody else? Thank you. Appreciate you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, Council, I would ask, respectfully ask to be excused at this point. Thank you, folks.
We have with us Doug Stowe, according to recent, all water quality consumers in the town of Charro. Doug, cheering.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here regarding the recent violations of THMs. I'll do my best to answer any questions or concerns that you might have when I finish. The THM violation we've noticed, notified just recently, kinda caught us off-guard, we weren't prepared for it. Through some investigation, we found that some things that should have been done had not been done. If you recall, I think it was back in two thousand and nineteen, we had a THM violation at that time. DHEC required us to come up with a corrective action plan. That plan included some things at our water plant, we switched from a gaseous chlorine to a liquid chlorine, we also stopped feeding chlorine on top of our filters, we started requiring our operators to draw down about twenty-five percent of the system before they started filling it back up to get that turnover in the tanks, and we implemented a flushing program. THMs usually occurs at the end of a dead-end line. Let me state for everyone here, the THM violation, per DHEC regulations, we are required to notify all customers of the water system. However, this only involves one area of town, and that is at NETC. If you are not at NETC, this violation does not pertain to you. Only at the end of the line, at NETC is where this occurs. So, we did implement a flushing program at that area, unfortunately, there was some change in personnel, the new personnel was not aware of the situation, and did not flush. That began a kind of a cascade effect, a snowball effect, if you will, of elevated levels out at tech. Due to a personnel change also at DHEC, usually when we start edging up in our, our numbers, we are notified by that person that we are edging up and we might need to look into it. Because of their change in personnel, we were not notified, and that's what caught us off-guard, because usually we are notified and we weren't. Ms. Tolson, excuse me, Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner did call DHEC and, you know, questioned them, and they said, yes, there had been a personnel change, and that was why we weren't notified. Unfortunately, DHEC's not taking responsibility, it's still our responsibility. So, when we started investigating and found out that the area was not being flushed as, as it should have been flushed, I had no authority over those personnel. We addressed it with Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Wolf assured me that it has been addressed and everything is, is being done as planned now, and we shouldn't have any further issues with elevated levels. However, since the period that, of non-flushing was so long, we have three bad tests for three quarters out of tech, so it's gonna be a while before those rotate off. So, we have one notification that went out, it's probably, probably gonna be at least two more notifications to the public. But once again, I remind you, this is only at tech, not any other place in town. The issue, the main issue is there's just not enough turnover out there, and that's why we implemented that flushing program out there, in that area. The tap is at the corner of State Road and Number Nine, the line goes out Number Nine Highway and is a looped around the tech. About eighteen thousand gallons of water is in that line, so we have three commercial pieces of property on that line, we have one resident, and we have tech. And even with those taps on there, water is just not being turned over enough, so that's why that, that area has to be flushed. And like I said, we, we have, or Mr. Wolf has addressed the personnel involved, and we are pretty certain that it's gonna be taken care of.
Rob, the question I have is, how frequently do you people be flushing that line?
Three times a week, sir. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Do you think it says it's okay to stop?
No, sir, we don't stop.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if you mentioned that it was TCN or TCM?
THM, so it's known as tri-helamethanes?
Yeah, I wanted you to get that definition of that acronym, because many of us probably don't know what it is.
Yes, sir. THM stands for tri-helamethanes, it is a byproduct of disinfection. When chlorine is allowed to sit in the water for, in a lab for extended period of times, it can react with the organics in that line and form THMs. So, basically, it, it occurs at the end of the lines, and that's the situation we're experiencing with NETC.
Yeah, so, who, how many times will the town monitor those lines now?
DHEC monitors those. It's, it's not toxicity, it's just THM, so it's tri-helamethanes, so it's, it's just a byproduct of the disinfection. DHEC monitors those for us on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so they would monitor any, any more times of that level, if that level's coming down?
No, sir.
So, it's just a quarterly basis, and that's it?
Yes, sir. And then the, the number that they use to find out if we're exceeding the limits is what's called a running average, so it's the average of the, the current four quarters, the most current four quarters, and then that's compared against what's called the MCL, the contaminant level, maximum contaminant, excuse me, maximum contaminant level, there we go. And if we exceed that, then we're notified.
Okay, so, how many months do you think it'll be before we're in the clean, so to speak?
Months, it'll be quarters, so probably at least two more quarters and probably a third quarter. So we're gonna be sending out notices for quite some time.
Doug, for the record, is our water safe to drink in town of Charro?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm here. Any questions? Thank you for the report.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, at this time, we have a special presentation, uh, present, Rob.
We had a recent election, and we have two members with us this evening, that this will be their last council meeting, that's Robbie Bennett and Mayor Andy Ingram, and we'd like to do a special presentation as a thank you to Robbie's time of service here. Robbie, if you'll come on down, we have a tradition here in the town. On behalf of the town of Charro, we'd like to present this painting, or this print, excuse me, to Robbie Bennett for his years of service on the Charro Town Council. We try to personalize it to each member, and in this case, it's a view of Second Street looking up towards the Charro Town Hall, so it shows all the businesses in town on Second Street. And the reason this painting was selected is because over the last seven years, Robbie Bennett has been a strong supporter of downtown revitalization, and has always been a consistent supporter of those efforts, both through events and investments in our downtown. So we'd like to present this painting to you, Robbie.
That's very nice.
Turn it over to Mayor.
Thank you, Rob. You don't get to go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say a few things. When Robbie came to this council, he brought a wealth of knowledge, in, in business knowledge and experience, and he also has a sharp mind with numbers. And knowing that, and knowing his experience, it was a no-brainer, but for me to put Robbie on the finance committee. And he joined Jim Crawford, Jim as his business experience, and also in the banking business with First Bank, and then Richard White, his career, professional career was in banking. So I couldn't think of anybody else but these three to serve on the finance committee, and I would, we couldn't have found a better finance committee with all that experience. These guys took their job very serious. We depended on them for their financial advice and guidance. They met with the auditor numerous times throughout the year to keep a finger on the audit and how the money was spent, but they also met with Tina numerous times to make sure that our annual budget was on track. But they, they've done a splendid job, and Robbie was a guiding force behind that, and we, Robbie, we appreciate your service here, and hope you'll find a, a place in your house that you can hang back proudly and have fond memories, but we appreciate the service that you've given to this community.
It's been fun, enjoyed working with you.
Mayor, the mayor insisted that he, he didn't want any kind of fanfare when, when he was leaving. He said, I already got my painting from the first time I left office, they said, don't give me another painting, so we wanted to respect his wishes, but we also couldn't let him have his last meeting without, just a quick thank you, without letting, turn it over to Mayor Prosser, Cheryl Mountain.
A proclamation celebration, the Mayor Walter Andrew R. Ingram. Whereas Mayor Andrew R. Ingram first took office in April of nineteen ninety-four, served through December two thousand and seven, and again taken office in January two thousand and twelve, and served through December two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas Mayor Ingram has worked continuously to improve the quality of life for residents in the town of Charro, and whereas Mayor Ingram has been a good steward of public funds and doing his taxes taxpayers, and Charro has saved over thirty million dollars as Mayor Ingram has been an advocate for grant funding for town projects. And whereas Mayor Ingram has been strong supporter of Charro's robust recreation department, and been instrumental in improving the quality of life in Charro by the addition of parks, concerts, festivals, sports, and regular events, and whereas Mayor Ingram has long sought opportunities for public safety improvements in the town of Charro, and under his leadership, the town of Charro has invested in new technology to improve officer's safety and combat Orion. And whereas Mayor Ingram has led the town of Charro in developing a comprehensive and structured improvement plan that once implemented would provide clean water and proper waste disposal in the town through two thousand and sixty. And where in the state of South Carolina, Mayor Ingram has been a tireless advocate for small municipalities and rural communities, ensuring that interest of proper interest at the state level. And where Mayor Ingram was a strong voice for changing Charro's form of government from the mayor council form to the council manager form, so that the needs of the Charro citizens can continue to be met in an increasingly complex government and regulation environment, and whereas this proclamation is unable to graphically document the anomalous and accomplishments of Mayor Ingram during his time in office, but is meant to demonstrate his committed commitment to the people of Charro for past, present, and future. Now forth, therefore, I, Cheryl Mountain, Mayor Protem of the town of Charro, do hereby issue this proclamation of thanks to Mayor Andrew R. Ingram for his years of service to the town of Charro, and for his work benefited residents in Charro. This done under my hand on the twelfth day of December two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Cheryl. I want to thank the town council for this. It's been indeed a pleasure to serve this community as mayor for the last twenty-six years, but I've also got some buddies in the audience that I was able to serve with, the county council, when I served there, and, and also, I've served with a lot of people over my forty-four years in public service. over my 44 years in public service. Being on the Town Council, I've served with five mayors, three, four, nine mayors. I can't remember how many. But it's been indeed a pleasure. I know I'll miss it, but it's time, and I wish this community well, and I wish this council well. And thank y'all for the opportunity to serve this community as I have. Thank you. Okay, now we'll get down to business. Counsel, you have your packet, second reading of ordinance 2024-07.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Yes, I overlook assistance comments. On our agenda, we have, those of you that are not on the agenda, we have not to address council this time on our post comments. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Chairman, Chesapeake County Council, Brett Bucker.
Yes, Brett Bucker, 978 Big Doodle Circle in Charro. Mayor Ingram is chairman of the Chesapeake County Council. I'd like to thank you for your years of service on the County Council. And you've served both as a councilman and also the county chairman. And we'd also like to thank you for all the many ways that you have helped our county while you served as the town mayor here in Charro for these number of years. And you are truly a public servant, and your service and guidance will continue to benefit the citizens of this county for years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
My name is Florah. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak. This is the issue of the water, which is being clarified to a certain extent. And I want to take the time and initiative to share a couple of things with the Water Department, the citizens of Charro, as well as the council and mayor of Charro. It is preventative methods as far as the water. We can use carbon filters, evaluate our filtration system. It's a danger to the public for the simple fact is it could cause liver damage, kidney damage, and different other type of damages because of the chemical compound of THC, TTHM. We can boil our water, we can send notices out to the citizens to boil the water. That would take up a 75% of the chemical residue evaporating into the air. We look much safer. The issues that the people have been misled by what we just said, that this water is not a danger to our public, and which it is. And preventive actions should be pursued for the citizens, as well as for the well-being of the Town of Charro. It should be looked in a little bit more deeply. No blind being cast, just upgrading, evaluating our water filtration system. Take a better care of equipment, make equipment money in the places in the water filtration process that we haven't been putting it in. And since 2019, the citizens of Charro had an increase in their water bill. And I think due to the water has been the way that it is, poisonous to our health. I think that the town, the council, the mayor, treasurer should consider a price reduction in the water bill for the citizens of Charro until this problem or this issue has been resolved. And it all came in a letter that was sent out by the Water Department of the Town of Charro. People could be notified to wash the boiled water. It would kill up to 75% of the bacteria. Not only do vegetation cause this chemical compound, but it could be waste slipping through our system filtration system. I want to take the time to thank you and wish that the town or whoever does the town will take heed and follow up. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
And if I could be this minute.
Is there anyone else like the rest, Counsel? Al?
I thought you were supposed to say your name. Al Johnson, 924 Johnson Road, Jefferson, South Carolina. Andy, you know I don't say a whole lot, but what I say I really mean. And I don't want what I'm fixing to say to sound like you're leaving, because you're not leaving, you're just leaving this job. And if I know you, you're gonna be involved in a whole lot of other things to help this community, our county, and this town. But anyhow, I just wanted to thank you for what you've done for Chesapeake County and the Town of Charro. We've been politic-ing, what, Andy, 35-plus years or whatever together? And I certainly thank you for what you've done, and I thank you for your friendship, most of all. And folks, I know y'all gonna miss him. He's been a good one. Thank you.
Good evening to the council and members, and the mayor, Protem, as well. Melvin Woodkerson, 601 Robin Hood Drive. I can appreciate what the young man said about the water and of being one that has studied chemistry and science all my life, interested in, of course, contaminants in the environment and the snafu we had several years ago, which is an ongoing situation in the community. And I just want the council to look into the culprits, the trihalomethane PCBs and the PFAS that we talked about over several years here. We say it individually, what the limits are, are no problem. But also, these culprits combine what are their implications and effects on the body. I'd like for the council to look into that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Palmer, and I certainly want to thank you, Mayor Ingram, for all of your help during the time I was the executive director of Chesapeake Marv EOC. You were very gracious to, I guess, give us a section of rubber smog that we have for the office. And I was unable to get it from the school board, so I got it through you once they gave it to the city. So, I appreciate that. And your help in helping us to get our early pay, the parking cards, and those kinds of things. So, I certainly thank you for your generosity and during the time that I was the executive director, how you helped. And you too, Robbie, being such a personable person and me calling your house and asking you questions, those kinds of things, you did not slip to mind. And I do appreciate that. And Al, I saw, oh, he's gone already. He's still with the County Council. They were nice too when I went to them to ask for funds to help with the agency. Y'all didn't turn me down, so I'm gracious for that. And I do hope you, Godspeed, whatever, your future endeavors are. Thank you.
Greetings, mayor, council. My name is Demond Maidee from Charro, South Carolina. I'm film producer, director. Been shooting film around here for quite a few years, United States, Morocco. But now, I'm shooting a feature, three features, which is Abraham Revenge Against Save and one called Little Busy, and one called Charro Natives. So, I just want to bring this to your attention, what is going on in the community. And if you want to be involved with this project, you know, it would be very beneficial and financial beneficial to the community if you become involved with this project. And I know there's something to look over for the next 30 days, and I would like to present this, my whole project, to you in detail. And I signed up for some hearing. So, thank you, my name is Demond Maidee, for giving me this time. Have a nice evening.
Is there anyone else that would like to rest, Counsel, or the post comments? We do have one now. Counsel, we have second reading of ordinance 2024-07. This is an ordinance to amend the Town of Charro zoning ordinance to enact certain changes to be consistent with the council or management of government, clarifying interpretations of certain uses and amend required parts for certain usage. Robbie, comments on that?
No, this is, again, just a review, periodic review of our zoning ordinance sent by the Planning Commission. These changes do come as a recommendation out of the public hearing that the Planning Commission held in November.
Counsel, you hear that it's just a recommendation out of the Planning Commission. I have a motion to accept recommendations. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Also, we have second reading of ordinance 2024-07. This is an ordinance to demand to amend Section 3-10 under Charro Town Code, dated with animal care.
This, again, comes from a resident who approached the Charro Planning Commission about the possibility of adding ducks to be permitted pets within the town limits, given that his child had an allergy to eggs, and there's no ready source of duck eggs in the community. And after reviewing the information surrounding the circumstances of keeping ducks versus chickens as pets, the Charro Planning Commission didn't find that there was any significant difference between the two, and the care for one is very similar to the care for the other. And so, they do recommend this change to the Charro Town Code to permit up to six ducks or six chickens within the town limits.
Counsel, you hear the recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt resolution 2024-07. Is that motion to adopt the second final reading? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Also, we have resolution 12-2024, a resolution authorizing submission of grant applications to the South Carolina Parks Recreation Bureau.
Every couple of years, the South Carolina Department of Parks Recreation and Tourism opens up grants through the National Park Service called the Land and Water Conservation Fund. These projects, or these grants, are used to enhance outdoor recreation in communities. And this year, after reviewing the Recreation Master Plan and what projects might be feasible within the grant limits, I'm requesting permission to submit a grant application to PRT to construct a splash pad at Arithood Park. The total cost of the project would be around $250,000, of which SCPRT through the National Park Service would pay for $125,000 of it, with the Town of Charro providing the other match.
Counsel, we have a resolution 12-2024. Do I have a motion to accept, adopt this request? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Also, resolution 13-2024. So, resolution 7-07 for the improvement of Arithood Park.
This is something that council has discussed over the last year. Local John Winberg passed away, and his heirs wished to do something nice for the improvement of one of our parks. And they offered the donation of the gazebo to Arithood Park in the area of the walking trail that's dressed up with more landscaping and to kind of fit in that area. It is within the Recreation Master Plan to have a gazebo in that area for the improvement of Arithood Park. This would come at no expense at the town. This is gonna be a very simple structure out there, and it will be a key thing with the general aesthetic of Arithood Park. For that reason, I'm requesting that Town Council pass this resolution to accept the gazebo as a gift from the Winberg family.
Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 13-2024? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Also, we have a request for a new tap of Laney Road.
A developer contacted the town several weeks ago about hooking onto town sewer. He purchased two mobile home parks out of Laney Road. His intent is to rehabilitate those mobile home parks. It is pretty far outside the city limits on the edge of our sewer system. Under policy, any tap that's made outside of the town limits of Charro has to be approved by council. This would add about 15 mobile homes to our sewer system. After speaking with Doug Stowe, we do have the capacity for this tap. After speaking with Kenny Grant, a tap is technically possible out there. So, for that reason, I'm requesting the council approve this tap, sewer tap.
Counsel, you hear the recommendation to approve the tap on Laney Road for the administration. Do I have a motion to adopt that request? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I have a question, Al. Our sewer tap, does it cover our full cost to put this tap in?
It will, because if there's any cost above what's normal, we may finish picking it up as part of that.
Does the limit, do we need to look at a limit on the number of mobile homes that might be used in this town?
You know, it's a problem. We should be good. We should be good in that area. There's almost so much area that they could put those mobile homes. They're not going to be putting into any other.
That is how it's actually run.
It is. Go down Laney Road, go off on the mound, Laney Road. I think both mobile home parks are in the lead.
Any possibility of picking up any other sewer taps out there for any residents that are on county, on seventy?
Not at this time. Usually, no one would proceed to change a sewer tap unless they're having issues with the seventy tap. At this time, no one's having any issues. So, I don't expect any taps to be requested.
These are all facilities that are being, that people are in that way? Is just, are they, are there any trails in?
There's some existing trails out there that are in bad shape. I wonder if they're all being rented out. I have no idea.
But this is not inside the town limits. This is.
Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Counsel, you have your packet, applicable reports on various topics. If you have any questions, hang in the post. Please get with the town manager. We have on agenda a request to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a portion and compensation at Charro. Please talk. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we want to go into executive session.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. I'm glad we go into executive session. I hope we can leave a lot of, if you want, a ground. We'll excuse ourselves for doing this.
Well, you know, I've been noticed uh in late this coming, and I asked her to write this if, if she's noticed any, she noticed any part of her family in her water system. Me, you know, I'm, I'm getting a little strange smell from the fake shower now. If, if it's me, do I smell?
It's your hot water. Always talking, if, if it's just your hot water, turn on the, just make sure that for it is. Uh what happens to you is, is it gets its water in your water cup and probably you're not sure it's a hot water.
And that's, just not get off track, but it's been there for a while and uh it's one of the, it's a great issue.
At my home, I don't touch the chemical water. I drive a little chap in the, when I'm not touching it here.
Yeah, that's one of those things you don't think of too often.
Even, even some from the line came to live in there and gave house on it. So I was just flushing that. And start by, and you can't, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not.
And you're the water park supervisor.
There is another thing to be directed at for everything for sure. It's just a water line and a water car. And he here the next to the back.
Yeah, I got too much time on my hands. I decided to sort of go into these meetings and uh Mr. Wilkins uh. My text messages to remind me. So, you know, I, I just thought of this. We all live here, nobody's going here, so we're construction over the country.
Okay.
Yeah. Not really.
It's surprising that a lot of people, I've, I've met people who've lived here in Carolina, and I'm not really familiar with it. The water plant is actually located up here in office, right there on tunnel one, our water supply.
Uh well, you know, I have driven back in there.
And then the western, like, it's, it's, it's outside the park, exactly where we changed the park now. Only the, they'll ask teams to go back down the road, or he's back down the road.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
But, and, uh.
Yeah. Sure, I'll try to make sure it's all clear.
This one, that's, you realize this one appears.
Yes.
Thank you. New water plant, it is apparently done, it's structured and it's structural resistant and planted. The money is just good. Yeah, I'm a small town in Southern Ohio, and I, I still keep track going on, up in that part of the world. They're riding New Highway, they're been, they're been chipping water systems for, for probably last ten years. And it's just an ongoing situation.
Uh, the land is sort of better. That's from the original installation.